...of April 22, 2020, of the Willis City Council to order via teleconference. And Kathy, can you lead us in the pledge and then do a roll call?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, Councilmember Connie.
Present.
Rodriguez.
Present.
Strong. Strong.
I put it on mute, I'm here.
Stransky.
Yes.
Mayor Gonzalez.
Present. So first of all, Kathy is going to have a timer for anybody from the public, and so Kathy calls time, she'll let you know you've exceeded your time for those from the public, dialing in. So please take notice due to the provisions of the Governor's executive orders and 2520, which has been certain requirements of the Brown Act and the order of the Health Office of the County of Mendocino Health Department in place. To minimize the spread of COVID-19 in the city, council members will be participating by teleconference in the meeting of April 22, 2020. And we all receive instructions on how to dial in, so public communication, the council will have participation in its meeting, comments shall be limited to three minutes per person, so that everyone may be given an opportunity to be heard, to expedite matters, and to avoid repetition whenever any group of persons wishes to address the council. On the same subject matter, the mayor may request that a spokesperson be chosen by the group. This item is limited to matters under the jurisdiction of the city council which are not on the posted agenda. Public criticism of the city council, commissions, boards, and agencies will not be prohibited. However, no action shall be taken. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak? Okay, hearing none, I will move on to item three. Public matters, A, approve a resolution authorizing the adoption of a debt management policy in accordance with the requirements of SB 1029, which became effective on January 1st, 2017, which are found in California Government Code 8855.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, this is Stephanie Gerbrandt, Sierra City Manager. Before you is a resolution and a debt, a resolution, or post-resolution approving a debt management policy. When we were preparing the bond financing materials for the next item at 3B, we were gathering materials and statutory requirements, and one of the statutory requirements is for cities to have a debt policy. It turns out, we, the City of Willis, did not have one, and so we consulted with our advisors, which are NHA Advisors, and Eric Scriven is actually on the line with NHA Advisors, and he and Bond Counsel did find, they recommended a debt policy, and we looked at that, and it is a common sense sort of policy cities need to have, and we will put that before the, for passage.
Okay, if you'd like to come online and explain, or?
Sure, be glad to, this is Eric Scriven with NHA Advisors, in cooperation with Bond Counsel Albert Reyes and others at the firm of Cutac Rock. We did the investigation, and we were surprised that the debt management policy, we had put one in place for the redevelopment deal that was done late last year and closed in January, but that was specific only to that particular transaction, the redevelopment deal. This one is broader, covers all forms of debt that the city might consider issuing, so this takes care of the policy need for issuing debt, whether it's new money debt, or in this instance, refinancing the wastewater funds.
Okay, I'll start off with Greg, do you have any questions? Do not. All right, Sabrina?
Do not.
Madge?
No questions.
Larry?
Oh.
All right, would anybody from the public like to speak onto this? All right, I'll bring it back up here and see if I have a motion.
I'll move approval, this is Madge.
All right. Do I have a second? I'll second it, Larry. Larry, second. And any further discussion, if not, I will call for the vote.
Councilmember Connie.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Strong.
Yes.
Stransky.
Yes.
Mayor Gonzalez.
Yes. All right, motion passes, now we'll go on to item 3B, approve a resolution authorizing the City of Willis to refinance outstanding Series 2007A and Series 2007B certificates of participation, authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute related professional services agreements.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers, this is Stephanie Gerbrandt, Sierra City Manager. We have discussed the refinancing of two of our outstanding sewer bonds over the last six months. We had discussed this in conjunction with our last bond refinancing, and said that we were aiming to do this in the near future because the rates were relatively high compared with what the market was showing. We had not acted to refinance those bonds because we are not the only contributors to those bond payments, we actually, the township of Brook Trails is also contributor to those bonds, and at that point, we were in negotiations for some. The settlement agreement is basically, we have agreed on all major terms of our settlement agreement, and I know that the town manager of Brook Trails, I have agreed, had agreed that it was certainly timely to look at financing. And with the current financial situation in the country and with the COVID-19 crisis approximately a month ago, I became a cogent of making sure our finances were in good shape, and noted that this was something we needed to pretty much jump on right away, take advantage of. We, the bond rates had been good, I knew that with the current financial uncertainties, I didn't know if that was going to last. I was also, and the Finance Director, June had also, had shared with you our concerns, that we did not have a reserve in our sewer accounts, and therefore, if there was financial uncertainty, we had no reserve to deal with that. In times of financial hardship, when you don't have revenue necessarily coming in regularly, it is good to have a reserve. The City of Willis has a nice reserve in its general fund, it has a nice reserve in its water fund, but does not have one in its sewer fund, and so this has caused me some worry, so I was looking at a bond refinancing that would accomplish two goals. The first goal would be to lower the rate, and the payment rate, so that we would have a better value for our customers. Second, I wanted to even out payments because it was a little bit all over the place because we had four different bonds, and so the payments were kind of coming in and out and not in a straight line. And thirdly, which I was very concerned with, get some liquidity on the short term, and so was looking into possibilities of how can we restructure this to gain some cash and liquidity on the front end, so we can accomplish two goals. One is to create a little bit of a financial cushion, a little bit of a reserve, but also, in case of hard financial times, we could, if another fund needed to borrow from that fund, that could be possible as well. And as you all know, a municipality has that power to kind of borrow one fund from the other for a short term in times of financial stress. And I wanted to make sure that our financial outlook allowed us to do that. I contacted Eric Scriven, who was our advisor during our last bond refinancing. Eric Scriven is with NHA Advisors, which is a very thin and long firm that has been around for a long time. Both June and I have had experience with that firm in our previous lives, and they did a great job on the last refinancing, and that was a incredibly good rate on that. So we contacted Eric Scriven, and he put together his team of Christian Springer, Rob Schmidt, and folks at Cutac Rock, Albert Reyes, and I think we also have Jeff Meyer on the phone, I think that was Hilltop Securities, and they basically created some scenarios for us. And we, this was done, you know, this is a lot of documents, and I know that it was a lot to digest. We put these together in a very short amount of time, and I know that I was looking for a scenario, and then I know that we had some, I had some really good comments from Councilmember Strong about comparing some different scenarios like we did last time, and so the folks at NHA have some long conversations with them, they put together a really nice presentation that you have before you, that I emailed you today, and it is also available to the public on our website. And I'm going to give this over to Eric Scriven now, and so that he can sort of walk you through that, and so we can think about these different scenarios, what we might like. Eric, I'm giving it to you now.
Okay. So that package for this bond refinancing is fairly thick. You've got a bunch of legal documents in there, and Albert Reyes from Cutac Rock is on the line. If you have any specific questions, or just want to know what each one of those agreements does, that's what the item before you actually does, is approves documents and gives the city manager authority to proceed if you achieve the objectives that have been set forth very clearly for the financing team by staff. What I'm going to do is go through the seven pages, and by the way, Jeff Meyer with Hilltop Securities is on the line as well, and he, you know, we get, with Hilltop's input, we use some market interest rates for these figures, run, they were run, I think, this morning or late last night, with probably a little bit of cushion, just to be conservative. So if you want to get deeper into the marketplace, Jeff is available and ready to speak to general market conditions if you like. So I'm going to jump right in to this seven pages, and just, first page two is what you have in place right now, which is four transactions, and they have different maturities and different interest rates. So you can see that, because one of the transactions, the 2015, has a shorter maturity, that it falls away, and then you have less payment, so it kind of steps down a couple of times over the next 30 years. So that's, I mean, it is what it is, that's what you have. You had, when those deals were done, back when they were done, they were good interest rates, and the proceeds, I am sure, were used for important purposes. So that's, you know, that's what we're working with, and the two transactions, as Stephanie mentioned, that are candidates for refinancing are the 2007A and 2007B. Those carry interest rates of 4.25% each, and they were issued through the USDA. The 2015 is, has a no-payment clause, you can't prepay those until December of 2025, so that's off the table, and the 2011 wastewater COPs, that interest rate is so low that those aren't economically refinancable either. So we're working with just the 27,000A and B. Any questions on page two?
When you say page two, what, just so the public knows, are you talking about the PowerPoint or the actual document?
The PowerPoint, I believe it's on the website, and it has seven pages, the first page being a title page, so we're working on page two of the PowerPoint that is titled Sewer Refunding Structuring Considerations.
Well, actually, that's, it's called status quo without refinancing.
That's the title of page two, yes.
Yes, that's the title of page two. Where on, where on the city's left side is that, can you sound?
I don't know.
I'm going to ask Kathy.
I'm sorry, I did not put it on, I thought that Jim did.
Oh. Okay.
I do not.
It'll be on, it'll be on the website, though.
It'll be on the website. The normal procedure when we have a PowerPoint presentation is we, we're supposed, we put it on the website the day after it, and I apologize that that's been going on today.
Stephanie, didn't you send it by email to all the council members?
Yes, I did. And it was hand-delivered to Larry Stransky.
I'm sorry, did Jim have a separate email that came to us?
No.
I think I have it.
Not one that I know of, Jim, did you send any?
So I received an email from Stephanie at 11:00 AM, 11:11 AM today, and I was, 14 people who are copied on it. At the very bottom of her text are two PDF attachments. First one is this PowerPoint we're looking at.
Okay, most I just want to get it on the record, what Eric was referring to, sorry, I'm going to let Eric continue.
Okay.
We're on status quo without refinancing.
And for those who are listening, this is six pages, we're setting forth what the city has in place right now, and then the next three pages.
Can I interrupt for just a moment? Um, I would just like to request that everybody who isn't speaking put their phone on mute, I'm getting a lot of feedback on my end. Thank you, this is Vanessa.
That's, that became very clear. Okay to go forward?
All right, Eric.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, good. So we just went through page two of the seven pages, which was what's in place right now. Page three is titled Option 1, Vanilla Refinancing, in quote vanilla refinancing. It's what I always call apples-to-apples refinancing. It's the base case, you just take the bonds that you're refinancing, and you refinance those bonds for annual savings each year to the same maturity. You're looking for that base case to produce excellent savings that would meet thresholds that would be worth refinancing for any city, and that's what's presented here. There is, based on rates that were given to us this morning, approximately $37,000 of average annual savings through fiscal year 2048. That's the maturity of the existing bonds that are being refinanced. The, a term that I think you may recall, for the redevelopment transaction back in the fall, net present value, in this instance, this option produces $892,000 of net present value savings, which is approximately 10.2% of the bonds that you're refinancing. So the rule of thumb in the bond market, if you will, is if you have a transaction that shows over 5% NPV savings, you should have a really good reason why you're not doing it, and anything under 3% NPV savings, you should probably have a really good reason why you might do it. Sometimes you want to restructure, there's other considerations, but that's sort of a rule of thumb in the bond market. Any questions on the vanilla option that we wanted to show, and we're always going to be looking at that to validate, at the time that we're pricing the bonds and selling them to investors, that this transaction makes sense on a base case scenario? Okay? Turning the page to option two, and this might be where Stephanie chimes in as well, we did a, we looked at, if you will, structuring the transaction to maximize upfront cash, given the fact that the world has changed, and cash in the bank for all entities, households, public agencies, companies, creates a buffer, if you will, for more methodical decision-making. Stephanie wanted to take a look at how we could generate some cash by delaying the payment for about a year and a half. I understand there's some things in the works that might enhance revenues down the road, and so this was something that we wanted to look at and show in words, but also graphically on this PowerPoint sheet, that you can see how the first couple of payments are preserved, if you will. The cash that would go to those payments stays in the bank, and you still have savings in each of the remaining years. The additional item on this is that the loan, the new loan refinancing bonds are extended for two years to maximize that amount of cash that you're able to preserve during the first two years, or I should say, a year and a half. And the last thing that I forgot to mention in all of these scenarios is that there is a restricted reserve fund that is held in a restricted fund for the benefit of the 2007 bondholders. It's equal to approximately one year of payment, or $535,000. That amount is cash in the bank, but it just sits there for the benefit of the bond investors that own those bonds until 2048. This transaction, whichever option is chosen, it's anticipated that there will be bond insurance purchase that will allow for that cash to be released to the city and its wastewater fund, to be put into the bank for cushion, if you will, for the wastewater fund, and potentially borrowed by the city's general fund or other funds in this difficult time, if needed, but will enhance the wastewater fund's reserves. Is there any questions on this, this page? Oh, I should say, the bottom line for this, with sort of the, a little bit of restructuring to preserve cash in the first couple of years, and extend the maturity for two years, you have a net present value of $734,000, which is approximately 8.4% as compared to the old bond issue that you're refinancing. Still a very strong refinancing. So I'll turn the page now, if you like, to option three, which we had worked with Stephanie and June to sort of formulate, and this is a full restructuring of the debt that's being refinanced, such that when the debt, the debt that you're refinancing, the new 2020 bonds, are layered on to the existing debt that's not refinanced, you'll have what we call aggregate level payments. And there's a couple of reasons why you would do that, which we'll get into in a moment, but you can see that we've still preserved or delayed the payment for a year and a half, so cash is preserved for the sewer fund for that. You're still releasing that $535,000 cash reserve that goes into the sewer fund's unrestricted reserves, and we do still extend for two years, out to 2050.
I had a question, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Okay. I hit my, I ended my call instead of hitting the unmute button, so I missed something. But I wanted to just ask, this is Madge, whether, under any of these options, if the city were to get a substantial, I don't know, what's the word, you know, grant or something from the federal government or from the state to reimburse us for this whole COVID-19 crisis, et cetera, in other words, if there was an influx of cash from another source, can we either forego or reduce the amount that we defer for that first year and a half? And would that then improve the overall performance if we were able to do that?
Well, I'm not an expert on the CARES Act or some of the other things that are being talked about, but one thing that I do hear most often is that those funds are going out, they're trying to go to cities and counties and other public agencies with the idea of preserving jobs, and a lot of the jobs that are potentially, most at risk are from, you know, that there's less economic activity, like sales taxes and hotel tax, those kinds of taxes, which is general fund money that goes to pay public safety, is the notable example, but others. So I don't know where the money's going to go, but I think it's going to be earmarked most likely towards general fund to preserve jobs, whereas wastewater and water, those have pretty consistent revenue sources. So that's my ad-libbing, Councilmember Strong. I, we, no one really knows precisely where that's going to go, but I think that's what I've heard.
Hi, I'm going to jump in, this is Stephanie. So there have been, there's lots of talks regarding CARE Act 4. We were hoping for some revenue backfill through the interim measure, which was going to be the interim financing between CARES Act 3 and 4, that did not pan out. The only thing that has been discussed is, first of all, paying cities for actual expenses, and then there's been a little bit of talk of a potential for backfilling revenue. No one is talking about backfilling 100% of revenue, and that is only going to be general fund revenue. We, for the sewer fund, whether or not it is an enterprise fund or whatever kind of fund you have, every fund you have, you want to have a reserve in that fund. Right now, there is no reserve in that fund, and I'm not sure why we never structured in a reserve. It is just a good policy to have a reserve in all of your funds. And I don't know if June's on the line, but I'm sure that she would agree with that. And it also allows us to be more nimble, so even if we were to have some of our general fund backfilled, it would be prudent policy, would be my recommendation, to build something that creates a cushion in our sewer fund. And if we have to borrow from it because we don't have, we run out of general fund reserve, so be it. I'm hoping that that will never be the case, but how But however, it just gives us one more tool in these next 12 to 18 months where I believe we need to be nimble. And that's, that's where I am coming from on this. Eric, is that, you agree with that one?
You're, you're, you're running the city. I concur with the more, the more flexible cash you have in the bank. That's, that's a good thing. And by the way, that'll help on the credit rating for the sewer, sewer bonds as well. So.
I'm on the line. The, hi Eric. I'm not sure you noticed that we, in the sewer fund, we do have like restricted cash, about like $87,000. I think that's probably come from the bond proceeds, not necessarily reserve. But it has been touched, it has not been touched for years since the bond was closed. So I'm not sure the reserve requirement of the bond, but that's what I can see off the financial statement for the wastewater fund. That's what I look. The only thing, if there's a possible trade out reserve is that, you know, $86,438. So that, that's it. We don't have no more than that on reserve, no.
Okay.
I have a question. The water and sewer rates wasn't part of the intent of raising the rates to rebuild, rebuild the reserve as well? I thought that that was built into the plan when we raised rates.
Yes. In theory, it is. But I, without more detail of when we did the re-increase, the re-studies, my thing is a lot of them are, we are receiving on, to fix the infrastructure for the wastewater system. We do have, we did have a little bit of deficit for provided services to, you know, to Brook Trail. We already know that all it come out. And then so that might be offset of whatever we had for the reserve for that purposes off the rate increase. That's my, that's my initial thought on that one.
And, and I think that what the plan was, was to build up the reserve extremely gradually because it's not like, so, so I think if there's any, first of all, we have to overcome the deficit and, and then build a reserve very slowly. So it basically leaves us without a reserve. I think that when we get further into the presentation, there's, there's some, going to be some benefit to ratepayers that, that I think will answer your question about that, which, which is another one of the nice things about this, about the refinancing. So.
Any more questions on, on three, option three, the restructuring, if you will? Okay. So page six, we basically summarize all, all the three previous pages, the three options, just so you can see graphically what each of those approaches does. You can see the gray bars, that's what you have in place right now. And the dotted blue and the dashed line green, those are options, actually option two and one respectively. You can see option, the green dash is just a vanilla refinancing the old bonds to the same maturity and just get annual savings on the bonds that you're refinancing. That, you can see there's savings in each year, but it doesn't, it doesn't change the shape, if you will, of your repayment, repayments for your overall debt off for, you know, all, all of the outstanding debt once these bonds go. The, the same can be said for the dotted blue as well. You do get a little bit of cash flow relief in the early years, the first year and a half or so. And we also, you can see on the right-hand side that we've extended the debt on, for two years as well, so that you can maximize that early front-end cash flow retention. And then the, the option three, the restructuring, you, you can see that the objective is to layer on the, the proposed refinancing onto the bonds that are not refinanced so that you create a level payment out through the maturity, as well as retain a little bit of cash flow relief during the first year and a half. So you can see how it, it goes up to that level point in fiscal '23. So there's, one of the key benefits in, in option three, in my mind, is you've lowered, you made a nice predictable repayment structure with all your debt. And you've lowered the pressure in the early years out through 2033 for increased rates. If you have any kind of a hiccup, you know, where additional debt had to be taken on or there was a, a reduction in revenues for whatever reason, net revenues to pay debt, you've got more cushion because you've lowered that, that payment during the next 12, 13 years. And it's just a more predictable payment, payment structure. It's, it, it's ratepayer friendly, as, as we would say. And I, so I'll stop talking there. The savings on all three examples or all three options are above the threshold that you would want to do a refinancing. But we concur with the city manager's thought that when you're going through this process, you should think strategically about exactly what you want. If you're going to go through this, you want to finish where you've set it up nicely for the ratepayers and the city, so that you have less, you have a multiple set of objectives that you're trying to meet. Getting cash in the bank, creating a, a better structure with less pressure on ratepayers is a plus and saving money overall is obviously the objective. We've got a comparison of the options in words on the last page, but I think I'll stop unless you would like me to continue.
Unless somebody has questions, I'll, I'll let you continue with your presentation. And then I have some questions by the USF, both of you. This is Jerry. Go ahead, Eric.
Well, I was going to say, I, I was going to just stop. I think we've laid out the options and I think the city manager's recommending option three, but obviously it's the council's prerogative to choose which one you like. All of the transa, all of the options save a, a good amount of money, a very good amount of money and achieve, some, some achieve additional objectives that are, are thought to be very important in this, in this time.
I just wanted, I just, this is Stephanie. I just wanted to also chime in that when you're hitting 2033 to 35, keep in mind that we also, there's a period of time in which you cannot refinance. And that period of time is captured by the lower payments. And in 20, I think our restrictions are lifted approximately 10 years into this, that we are able to, if we, if bonds are in a favorable position, we could get structure to gain a, and, and that could be possible as well. And I just wanted to add that as a possibility as well.
Do I have, do I have a question? This is Madge.
It was George Eric thing right now. Eric, or just Stephanie?
I'm on, but I'm listening.
Yeah, my question was, these are of course all hypothetical based on whatever the interest rate will be when we actually make the deal happen. And it, and these are sort of conservative right now, so it might even be a little bit better, but, but we'll count on that. My question is approximately, what kind of savings does the option three provide to the ratepayers? Just like a percent reduction of what? Or is there a rough estimate of that?
Well, we, option three, we do calculate, heck, yeah, there it is. The net present value savings is $572,000, which is 6.6% of the bonds that you're refinancing. So it's still well above the 5%. But you're, since you're restructuring it to create a level overall payment, you're putting some of the principal maturities farther out, which carry a slightly higher interest rate. So you do lose some savings, but you lose, you gain significant financial flexibility during the next 13 years.
Well, my question is, I bet only the bond restructuring, is that going to have, maybe Stephanie could take a crack at that or June, is that going to have any significant reduction to our sewer ratepayers? Is it, is it a pretty small blip or is it, you know, I just, I don't know. Obviously, any reduction is better than none, but.
I think that what, what we're looking at is, so our, our rates are set by council and, and we, and we have a 218 process. And, and what this may do is the next time the rate increases come around, we'll look at our financial position and actually be in a position where we may not have to make the rate increase that was recommended by the last study. And I think Eric and I, I can't remember, I know we looked at that, but that was what we were talking about is one of the benefits of the third structure is that there, there's a, we might be actually, when this, the, we have, have a study that recommended certain rate increases. When that comes before you again, you may be able to say, you know what? It was recommended that we do this increase, but we don't have to do it now. So that's one of the.
Good. May I ask you to your question?
Yes, thank you.
Does anybody else have a question? Otherwise, I have some, but if not, I'll hook it up to somebody else.
I have a question. This is Greta.
Go ahead, Greta.
Can someone explain why option two creates the greatest pressure to raise rates?
Well, if you turn to page six, where all three of the options are laid out together. Option two is the blue dotted line. So that has the highest annual payment for the next 13 years. So if there, if there was any kind of adverse situation where revenues went down or you needed to raise additional funds because you had some mission critical types of improvements that you needed to take care of, you don't have any cushion. You have, I shouldn't say you don't have any, you have less cushion. It's all relative. You have much more cushion with the orange line being much lower than the dotted blue line. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Eric, I have a question, or actually may, may be more Stephanie, but Brook Trails obviously benefits from the restructuring. Have you talked to them and did they have a chance to weigh in on these options as far as which works for them?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Yes, this is Stephanie. I have been keeping Tamara, the, the town manager of Brook Trails, apprised of this, and I have sent her this structure. And right now, what happens is we make our payment and then they pay us 36% of whatever we've paid on our payment. So to the extent that we are going to forbear payments for the next 18 months, that will also mean for them that they get to create the, the identical savings for themselves. And, and, and their rates were similarly dropped by, by this percentage, they get the identical benefit. So since, so they get to weigh in this in terms of, they don't sign off on the bonds, but it is just part of our agreement with them. And so what I anticipate is whatever this council decides, then the township, this will be presented to them for their consideration. But we, I have been keeping the, Brook Trails in the loop and, and they're excited about the, the prospect of the refinancing. And I think it's a good idea.
All right. As part of that question, with the release of the $535,000, is all of that come to us or do we have to split it with Brook Trails?
No, I think the $535,000 is ours. But I'd like, I'd have to look at that. Because that's, that's our own reserve. And what we're getting forbearance on is that's what they get to share is because we don't need to make the payment, then they don't, they can keep that as their own reserve.
The best analogy I, I think I would have is I, I buy a car at, at a high interest rate, I come in two years later and refinance it at a lower interest rate and my payments go down. And for the sake of argument, I bought the car with Brook Trails, so we all are driving the same car and now we're paying less all, all the way around. That's the best.
That's it. That's it.
All right. Sounds like option three looks good to me. So, all right, anybody else on the council want to ask any questions? There, I don't open it up to the public. Okay. Anybody from the public would like to weigh in on this?
Hello, Mayor Gonzalez. This is Tamara Allenies from Brook Trails. I just wanted to touch base with you and the council and thank Stephanie for keeping us in the loop and heard what she just said, and I couldn't agree more. We are enthusiastic about the city looking into this and thank Stephanie for her hard work and working out these options tonight. And I look forward to hearing more from the council on how you decide to move forward.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else? Anybody else from the public like to speak? And I really appreciate Tamara you being here or on with us. Definitely wanted to hear from you guys. Okay, I guess I'll, I'll bring it back up and unless there are any further questions, or Stephanie, if there's any else you want to add, I think I'm going to call for a motion.
I, I actually have a question. This is Greta.
Okay, go ahead.
So one of the things that has been mentioned is that choosing option three would allow us to build a reserve much more quickly than the rate increase that we've already approved. But my question is, how will we actually build a reserve if by going with this option and freeing up this front-end money, that we can then transfer into another fund that may be experiencing a shortfall, like for example, the general fund? How are we actually building a reserve? And are we not just, you know, stealing from Peter to pay Paul?
Eric, do you want to take a stab at this? I'm assuming I'll.
Sure.
Hey, but let me, I think I'm, can you hear me? Sorry. This is Stephanie. I, absolutely, what we're doing is, is creating reserves in all of our accounts so that we can be nimble. But these things need to be repaid and that is absolutely crucial, that if we borrow from one fund to feed another fund, we should have a strategy for refilling that fund. And this creates a way for us to be nimble in what I see is going to be a very difficult financial time, not, not just for our city, but all cities and individuals and businesses and everybody. So it gives us the, the highest amount of, of being able to be nimble. But we have to create a strategy on the long-term to increase our revenue and our general fund revenue, because if we have to borrow for the general fund, we have to pay this sewer fund back. And that is. pay this sewer fund back, and that is absolutely imperative, and, and I believe that there are legal requirements that we do that within a certain amount of time. Um, so that is, it will, it is not a long-term fix, it is a, let's get us through this next eighteen-month fix. And so thank you for that, that's a great question.
Any other questions? Glad I kinda wanted to ask a question on that same point, Stephanie. So assuming we, we took option three, but we did, we borrowed, um, just with the liquidity that if we wanted to borrow, we could, is that correct? And it's overall, it would lower our payment?
Exactly.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? If not, I would like to call for a, uh, motion.
This is Madge. I just wanted to clarify one more thing. Um, option two is more savings, um, overall, but higher, I think, what, I think that, uh, my question is, reason it becomes a level, um, payback is because we're mixing the two thousand and seven A and B restructuring with our other loans that, uh, that aren't on the table. Is that what...
Correct. That's exactly right.
Okay. So, um, I guess my only hesitation is, is it worth, um, taking advantage of that for the next ten years, keeping it a level overall with all of the loans considered, or because it's a little bit better at the end of the whole fifty years, or whatever, twenty fifty, um, would it be better to go with option two than, than option three? And maybe Stephanie should respond to that. I guess that's my only hesitation.
Um, well, for, for option two, it is always a concern to me that it creates the pressure on ratepayers, that we will have to, you know, continue raising rates, and we, um, nobody likes that. Um, as an investor, um, I think that what, what we always have to be doing is not get a loan and then wait for thirty years, and say, that was a great thirty-year loan. I think that you always have to look for restructuring opportunities and refinancing opportunities, and just, um, always be watching the market. And that is something that prudent financial advisors do, and, and as a city, we should be doing. And I can't imagine we are gonna keep a barn for thirty years. I can't, i- in this day and age, it's just, it's not a typical thing to do. So, um, this creates a nice level structure for us for the next, you know, twelve to fifteen years. We don't know what the, the world is gonna be like then. Um, if rates increase a great deal, then we've got a heck of a deal. That's a, that's a good rate we've got locked in. Um, but then again, who knows? It may go down to two again. We, you know, we, none of us have a, have a crystal ball, but what we have locked in is a darn good rate. And, uh, at the same time, we get this front-end, um, loosening of pressure of ratepayers when we really need it right now. So that's why I am.
Thank you. So with that, I, I would like to move approval of the, um...
Can I, can I ask one more question, Madge, before you make your motion?
Sure.
So this is Greta, and, um, I just, um, wanted to, to just confirm that ultimately, when decisions are being made, uh, to borrow from one fund to help another, the council will ultimately have the ability to yea or nay that decision. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Well, I'm moving approval of the recommended action, uh, which is option three, and those are the parameters under which, um, our city manager can proceed and, um, potentially finalize this whole deal. That's my motion.
All right. Do I have a second? All right. Seconded by Greta. All right.
Could I get a repeat of which option? The phone cut out. I couldn't hear her.
Option three.
All right. So I have a motion, a second. Do you have any further discussion? All right. I thought that's out. Anybody from the public wanna weigh? Okay. I guess I'll call for the question. Kathy?
For the vote, Councilmember Connie?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Strong?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Mayor Gonzalez?
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much, bond folks, Eric, Stephanie.
And I wanna also thank Eric for coming up with the PowerPoint. It really was very helpful. Yes, I agree.
It was our pleasure, and, uh, it's good, you need that information to make good decisions. I just wanna also, uh, once again, say we have Albert Reyes from Q-TAC on the line, and, uh, Jeff Meyer from Hilltop Securities. We'll, we'll endeavor to, you know, do the best we can, uh, and get this, bring this home for, for what you, you desire. Thank you.
All right. So now at this point, we, item four, enactment of ordinance, as we have none, we're on item five, consent calendar, and we have city council minutes of March eleventh, March twenty-fifth, special meeting, Mar- April ninth, special meeting, and item B, resolution ratifying and extending for an additional thirty days the city manager director emergency services proclamation of the existence of a local emergency as a result of the novel coronavirus, COVID-nineteen pursuant to resolution twenty twenty dash ten. And item C, stopping an amended resolution establishing a fiscal year twenty twenty-one project list to receive state funding from S-B one Local Streets and Roads Program. I mean, that's behind, uh, does anybody wanna pull any of the consent items? Okay. Then do I have a motion on the consent calendar?
I would so move. This is Larry.
All right. Do I have a second?
Oh, seconded by Madge. I did, I did, I did, I gave Kathy a few, um, little corrections, but, uh, I know those are all incorporated, so...
Oh, okay. Thank you. So, uh, motion by Larry, seconded by Madge. Any further discussion? Anybody from the public wanna speak? Okay. And Kathy, if you could go ahead.
Councilmember Connie?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Strong?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Mayor Gonzalez?
Yes.
All right. And we're not gonna discuss it, but item six is informational reports, building inspection activity and business license activity, and that's a bit, will be available on the, on our website. And now at this point, we're gonna recess as the Willett City Council and reconvene as the Willett Planning Commission, which is our item seven, commissions, agencies, authorities, public hearing. Item A, discussion and possible adoption of a resolution to approve conditional use permit, application number U dash nineteen dash zero one regarding thirty-eight Wood Street in Willett for mixed use, and Dan Green is here for the applicant, and we, so, is it Michelle that was presenting?
Yes, I'm ready.
All right.
Good evening, Chair and Commission, Michelle Johnson, Assistant Planner. Tonight's request is to bring a conditional proof use permit before you, U nineteen dash oh one, on behalf of the applicant Dan Green and property owner Helga Rapp, to convert an existing building to support both residential and commercial uses at thirty-eight Wood Street. As of today, we've received five emails in support of this project. The project is found to be consistent with the applicable goals and policies identified in the CG, Community General of the General Plan, as subject to the conditions of approval, and the development standards required for commercial and residential use in the C-one Community Commercial Zoning District and SS Seismic Steady Combining Zone. In the Community Commercial C-one Zoning District, single-family dwelling units are permitted as an accessory use to the permitted commercial use with a conditional use permit. The project was determined to be exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act SEQA, based on existing conditions, conversions of small structures and infill, infill development sections. The proposed project will include the conversion of an existing building that is currently eight hundred and seventy-eight square feet. Six hundred and forty-eight square feet of that building is currently used for commercial space, and two hundred and thirty square feet of that building is used for patio and storage area. A building will be converted into three hundred and ninety-six square feet of commercial space, and six hundred and eighty-nine square feet of one, into a one-bedroom residence, and ninety-two square feet will be used for a covered area. The project will also include a six-foot perimeter privacy fence on the north, east, and west property lines, an enclosed garden area with planter boxes, and five parking spaces. The issues identified in this project, um, were, one, the, the issue of the fact that the project is located in a commercial zone, and in a commercial zone, residence is not allowed. It's only permitted when it is above a commercial space. However, with a use permit, the residential use can be, um, approved, um, by the planning commission. Condition of approval, one, has been added to ensure that the three hundred and ninety-six square foot portion of the commercial building is maintained, um, in an effort to be consistent with the general plan and zoning requirement. Uh, condition number two has also been applied, which is just a general noise standard, which, uh, limits the hours of construction activity during the weekdays and weekends. Issue number two identified in the staff report is the fence height. This particular parcel is identified as a, as a corner lot, therefore has special requirements to maintain visibility, um, as noted in the condition of approval number three, that the project must be consistent with the material type and the location of the perimeter fence to be consistent with the Willett zoning code. Uh, the issue number three that was recognized was regarding the, um, in, um, in the SS Combining Zone, which is the Aqua Preo Fault Zone. A condition of approval has been identified, um, that, that states that for future development, a geotechnical report may be required to the Community Development Direct Department, um, based upon, um, the building permit requirements and state law requirements. Um, when coming up with this condition, we had a discussion with the, this falls on the building department, and we had a discussion with the building inspector, and, um, he directed us that based upon the scope of the work, the fact that the project is already built out, um, that it was, what, in that you're not going to be, to require a, um, geotechnical report given the amount of concrete that's there, um, may be unfair and unreasonable. Therefore, to add a condition that moving forward, um, if the scope of the project were to change, that that may trigger a geotechnical report, um, to the Community Development Department. Key issue number four is parking. The project is, as proposed, would be, there's an existing twelve vehicle parking spaces located on the parcel. The proposed project would convert six of those parking spaces on the west side of the building, and two vehicle parking spaces on the east side of the building, um, which would leave four parking spaces on the east side of the building, and one parking space would be added to the north end of the building where the residence is, and that would also include a, a gate, um, for security. Um, this, this parcel is unique in that when you, when you visit, when you visit the parcel, you, there's striped parking spaces, um, however, that, those parts, those striped parking spaces are actually owned by, they're part of that initial parcel, and, um, staff did do their due diligence and try to find some kind of lease agreement that may have been, uh, put together. We reached out to the engineering and public works to see if they had any, um, if they had any documentation that said that some kind of agreement had been made with the city, um, in order for the city to use those parking spaces, and we weren't able to locate any of them. Um, moving on to condition number five, it requires that the applicant provide vehicle parking spaces that are consistent with the development standards in the zoning code. Um, based upon the project and the consistency with the surrounding uses, staff is recommending by resolution that use permit U nineteen oh one, um, be approved based upon the following findings in the staff report and the recommended conditions of approval by staff. Uh, I do have, um, Dan Green on the phone, if you have any questions for him. Dan Green is the applicant, and he is representing the property owner.
All right. Go ahead. You know what? I think at this point, I'll, let's put Dan on, and then see if any of the council have the questions. I do have one question, but I'm gonna let everybody else go first. Dan, would you like to say something first, and then we can ask you some questions?
Um, no, I'm here listening, and if anybody has questions, we hope we can answer them.
Okay. I'll start off with, uh, um, Greta, do you have any questions?
No, I don't have any questions, but I would just warn my fellow council members that parking is going to be definitely something we hear about. Um, I think this is a really nice proposal, but parking is, is maybe a big factor for employees and patrons of J.D. Redhouse, Luce Caboose, L-Maxx, and the Bookchuggler. Just wanted to put that out there.
Okay. Uh, Suprina?
Um, are we able to ask the applicant what type of business activity? Uh, um, I, I imagine that you've already talked to the neighbors, um, as his standard, and sounds like everybody's in support of it.
I think it'd be subject to zoning, but I think I referred to Michelle there, what kind of businesses could come in, or, or if there is one, Dan, that you have in mind that's supposed to come in?
So, um, it, actually, when we did, um, analyze the project, when we looked at that space, we analyzed it based upon multiple different commercial uses that could go on, go into that space, and each, and it defaults back to one parking space per three hundred square feet, and so it, which is the, kind of the standard for the commercial. So we, we looked at multiple scenarios, and, and given different scenarios, we wanted to make sure that no matter what went in there, that we were able to, um, accommodate the parking. So that, that was considered in making the, um, determination, and the project is consistent with the required parking for not only commercial use, but also for residential use.
Okay. Suprina, did that answer your question?
Yes. That works.
Madge, do you have any questions?
Uh, can you hear me now?
Go ahead.
I can't tell whether I have mute on or not. Are, can you hear?
Yeah, we, we can hear you. Good. Do you have any questions?
Um, not really. Uh, it is sort of a surprise that those, um, that those parking spaces on the west side of that building are not part of the public lot, that are owned by the applicant, uh, or the owner of that building, but given that they are providing the required parking, and that the city parking lot, uh, even without those extra spaces there, is, uh, pretty large, um, I don't see that as a, a real problem. And, um, it's, it's surprising that there's no record of the city having some kind of a lease or something on those parking spaces, but they don't. So, thank you for researching that.
Uh, Larry, do you have any questions?
Oh, I think it's a really good idea.
Uh, Greta or Michelle, I have a question. So I, I actually was at that meeting, I believe, when that originally went in, and, uh, it, and I seem to remember that it was private property, but I think there was kind of, not sure, a handshake deal, or it might even be in the, uh, records of that meeting, that basically, they, they didn't, they, they didn't care if anybody else parked there, but they were, they, they definitely, um, it was part of being kind of a good spirited thing when Helga and her husband had the, uh, shopper, when they redid the parking lot. So that's how I remember that, that particular meeting, and so, well, I, I think we all went into that at the time with, they did, they didn't belong to us, but they were for all practical purposes, it was part of the lot, uh, with the owner in compliance. But the one issue, cause I remember when I was chief, I, I had some concerns with the, we wanted a red zone right in front on Wood Street because of the traffic issues, and then the council at the time, um, didn't wanna do it. And I know I've seen some traffic jams there, especially when they're loading and unloading, um, at J.D. Redhouse. Michelle, if that's brought into consideration, does that affect anything either way? And did you get any, any input from folks on that?
I was gonna...
All of the, um, the emails that we received were in favor of the project. We had one initial concern, but, uh, and then I went, I went ahead and delivered a staff report and she had an opportunity to look at the plans and, and was actually, thought it was a good idea after having an opportunity to look at it. Um, it's, yes, we're removing the parking spaces, um, but it is their property and we weren't able to locate anything that would, um, that would suggest differently. Um, and we, we wouldn't necessarily be increasing the traffic based upon taking the existing use from a commercial and converting a portion of that into residential. Potentially what we could be doing is reducing the required parking, because you're reducing the square footage of the building. Um, so that was taken into consideration.
Uh, Michelle, actually, what I was talking about was the parking on Wood Street itself, because I know at one point during one of the circulation studies, when we were talking, there was talk of, uh, of changing the one-way to the opposite direction on Wood Street, um, was one of the things that was considered at one of our scoping sessions when we were talking about the downtown plan. And, uh, I know that, again, that would be a dicey issue depending on as far as, and again, I'm going if we do it at a later date to deal with that separately, but I was just wondering if that was considered. Not, not the parking in the parking lot, because I believe that it belongs to the applicant already, so it's just.
Is it, you're referring to circulation? Is that what you're talking about?
On Wood, on Wood Street itself.
Okay, um.
Can I add something to this?
Go ahead.
Uh, as of today, that whole portion on Wood Street in front of the shop has been painted red.
Is it red? Because I thought that that portion in front of the shop wasn't and, uh, and if it is, then I don't think it's an issue, but it, there was a part that was red except right in front of the shop and the concern I have is that the shop hasn't been in operation for a couple of years now and so now all of a sudden if something occupies there, then there, there may be more parking. So, again, if it's all gonna be red, then I've got no problem there on Wood Street.
I was there today and the whole curb was just recently painted red.
Okay, then I'm, I'm, as far as there.
Jerry, it was painted red a few weeks ago.
Oh, okay. Then I guess I changed that, because, uh, I know at one point that part in front of the, uh, the hair salon was, was left open as a parking spot on Wood. So, okay. Um, I think we've heard from everybody and I'm at this point, I'm gonna open up the public hearing and see if anybody from the public would like to speak onto this project. And we have a public comment that came via email that would be entered into the record. Again, last call for the public. All right, at this point, I will close the public hearing, bring it back up and I guess I'd be looking for a motion.
This is Suprema, I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay. That's Larry. That's Larry, seconding?
Yes.
All right, any further discussion? If anybody from the public again like to speak onto this. All right, I guess, uh, call for the vote. Kathy?
Councilmember Connie?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Strong?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Mary Gonzalez?
Yes. Thank you, Dan. Thank you, Michelle.
All right. Can I, something, uh, Jerry?
Yeah, go ahead.
That, um, this whole process, you know, government, you know, taking care of things with government, but under the current circumstances that we are under, this kind of happened when this all developed and I'd like to thank Michelle and Dusty and, um, uh, Davey. I, everybody was really responsive, um, the process worked great on the back and forth through phone calls and emails and, uh, it was actually a pretty pleasant experience to work with the city staff.
Well, thank you very much and, and thank you for the input. We'd like to hear that. So, all right, at this point, I'll move on to item, I guess we'll reconvene as the Willis City Council and we'll be back to item eight, city manager reports and recommendations.
Uh, hello, this is Stephanie Gerbert Sierra, city manager, and our first item is a consideration of a consultant contract with Andy Heath Financial Services for a time period not to exceed two years for an amount not to exceed $200,000. Um, Andy Heath is an individual who was the, he was the finance director for the city of San Jose for several years and he retired from San Jose. And he has been acting in a capacity as a, as a sort of a traveling finance manager for some small cities. He currently is a finance manager for the city of Grass Valley and recently ended a gig in Kalusa as their finance director. Um, we were introduced a few weeks ago and we've had a lot of discussions. He was very highly recommended, um, and we had some discussions about what he could do for us and he lives a few hours away and, um, I feel very good about this, um, this arrangement. He can come on site a day or two a week. He plans to use the rest of the time working from home. Um, he's probably going to work approximately half-time. We still desperately need an accountant, but with his help, I'm hoping that he can help actually find the staff we need for the account, for, for our finance department. Um, with the loss of June, uh, June has been an amazing asset to our community and to our city and we're sorry that, that she's gonna no longer be here and, um, I guess the 30th is her last day. Um, so Andy Heath is gonna, i- i- if you make the decision on this contract, they'll be able to work together tomorrow for a bit and then, um, he's ready to just start right up and he is familiar with our, our city and, um, kind of introduced him to that and we're just gonna try to find an accountant and right now, we're, we've been trying to, um, help June, just been working from, from home for the, probably the last two months. And Kathy, especially Karen's been working a lot and myself, we've been trying to take on some of the duties of the finance department and it's been tough, I, I won't lie. Um, so I, I ask you to consider this resolution and contract and, and hope that you will approve it and, um, at our next council meeting, Mr. Heath will, will probably be on the phone.
So, would, uh, Mr. Heath like to speak to us? Is he on the?
I don't think, I don't think he's on tonight.
Oh, okay. All right. Is there anything else like that, otherwise I'll open it up to council. Um, Greta, would you speak?
No questions.
Okay. Uh, Suprema?
Not at this time.
All right. Madge?
No questions.
Larry?
Questions.
All right. All right, at this point then, I would be looking for a motion.
Did you open it to the public at all?
Thank you.
Oh, oh, you're right. I did, uh, thank you for doing it. Anybody from the public that would like to speak onto this? Or Nick Baugh? Okay, bringing it back up. I will call for the motion then.
This is Madge, I'll move approval.
All right. One second.
Larry, this is second.
Okay, a motion and second. Any further discussion? Anybody from the public? Last chance, okay. Glasses.
Councilmember Connie?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Strong?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Mary Gonzalez?
Yes, and just a quick question for Stephanie. So, um, do you end up getting with him and it would be Mr. Heath that would be preparing our budget then?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, all right. This is, this is Madge, just wanted to comment, thank June for continuing to serve, uh, even after she had submitted her resignation and keeping us, uh, kind of living along and, um, I'm really pleased that we're able to fill that gap and with somebody with that kind of experience. Thank you.
And, and I would echo what Madge said, thank you, June, and I, hopefully you stay healthy. All right.
This is June, thank you so much. I'm glad to, uh, work for the city of Willis. I really enjoyed working here, actually.
Yeah, thank you, June. This is Stephanie. Um, you really transformed us and I, I, I'm so proud of what you've been able to accomplish here and, and just thank you so much. And the fact that you've been able to, you know, you're still pitching in and, and you're gonna bring us into, uh, open gov, which is gonna make us more transparent and, and so much better for the public and I, I so appreciate that. All right, thank you.
So, item 8B?
Yes, 8B is our, um, something that we're keeping on the agenda until, um, this passes and it's the general discussion of city business as it relates to COVID-19. Um, things change constantly with the current crisis and it's exhausting and it's, um, sometimes terrifying and I go up and down Main Street and my heart is just with all the business owners that are trying so hard during this time. Um, the CARES Act was, um, an attempt to try to help folks get through this and I believe that local government was really helping for a little bit of a bailout during the interim financing period, but with the loss of funds and the PPP financing, um, Congress decided to put those funds in the interim financing towards small business, which I think is a great thing and I'm hoping that more people can take advantage of the PPP program and the small business loans that are being offered by the Small Business Administration. Uh, I just spoke to Richard Baker over at the Senior Center and he was actually the recipient of funds from the PPP and the Senior Center just received $90,000 and so I was really proud of him for doing that. Um, but I, I still encourage, and I think the West Company, we're still encouraging businesses to do that. Um, there are a couple of issues that I wanted to bring up to you. I know that I'll make, uh, that we actually had a call with our county health official this morning, the city managers of all the counties, of all the cities in Mendocino County, and she gave a, a very nice presentation and we're looking towards a, a relaxation of some of the sheltering in place at the beginning of, of May and we don't know what that looks like and I think it's gonna depend on many factors, um, but they are, they are working towards that. There are a couple of questions out there that I, that people have asked me and that, that have come to me and I, and I wanted to bring those back to council. One of the delicate issues is, um, one of the things that would probably change as of this Friday, there're gonna be three new public health orders coming out on Friday. One of those is going to be the ability to travel up to 20 miles to enjoy recreation and so people could actually drive to a park and, and that has not been allowed. Previously, you could only walk to a park or bike to a park. Now, all of the city parks have remained closed, um, most of Mendocino County parks have remained closed. I think that there is been pressure on some parks with trails, particularly on the coast, to reopen to some traffic so that people could walk, um, in a park-like setting. Our parks are a little different, however. Our parks are, are fairly small, we don't have trails for our parks and they still want recreational facilities not to be open, they don't want playground equipment to be open and they don't want team sports to happen. Um, they want people, you know, if it's possible to be able to sort of walk through a park and that's okay. And for the city of Willis, I'm not sure what that means and I sort of wanted to ask, um, the city council how they feel about our parks. If they do loosen the restrictions for recreation and for parks, how do you feel about our parks being open?
You know what, I'll open it up to Greta first.
I, I think that, um, there are a lot of people in our community who would really welcome the parks being reopened. I know I've heard from several people particularly about the dog park, uh, people who have animals in, um, apartments who are feeling really limited by their ability to, uh, exercise their, their dogs. But I, I fully understand the city's concern to keep people from congregating and honestly, we just don't have the, um, capacity in our police department right now to keep an eye on folks and until the public can really, um, show that they're, you know, keeping the physical distance, I, I just don't know if it's a smart move for the city from a liability point of view. Um, I, I'm personally glad to hear about the change because I normally take my dogs to run up in Brook Trails on the trails there and have not done so since the sheltering in place order was given and being able to go up there and run him is gonna be a huge relief to us in our house. Um, I'm hoping that other, um, city residents will get that same relief, um, and just remember when they are up on those trails to keep their distance from one another in order to protect our community.
Suprema? Well, I'm speaking, I guess, mostly as a grandparent and a parent and I absolutely am in support of opening up our parks. I think it's prudent to keep the playground equipment, uh, closed because we can't sanitize between uses, but, uh, children are, they're playing on the sidewalks, they're playing on the pavement, they're playing in parking lots and I don't think that that's in any way, uh, a healthy alternative. And so I would support opening up the grassy area in parks with, uh, with the restrictions posted, that, you know, uh, there's no sports activity and, uh, you have to have social distancing, being a no gathering of groups, but, um, I, I find it sad that, uh, that the grass isn't, isn't available and I think sometimes too that, uh, for those of us who have a yard, uh, to go out and to sit at the patio, we sometimes forget about the people who maybe live in an apartment, a lot of people in apartments. There is nowhere for them, there is no escape from their family with their children and so I'm seeing an increase in, in concerns over mental, mental health for children. So, I would support the opening of parks with limitations. Hi.
Say, Madge?
Yeah, I'm on it.
And somebody has their phone not muted.
Yeah. We're getting a lot of background on somebody's line if they could mute.
Mute your lines, everybody.
Um, I, I tend to agree with both Greta and, um, it does seem to me in the larger park like, you know, like the Recreation Growth Park, that there's enough space there that it could be, um, space for people to get outdoors and for people who live in apartment buildings, um, that would be a really nice, a nice option to have. Um, but I, I agree that some of our other parks, certainly the dog park and the skate park, um, are, and the playground equipment are, are too, uh, it wouldn't work if, if you couldn't keep that, um, safe with social distancing and so forth. So, I think maybe a partial lifting, uh, when the public health department says it's okay would be all right with me. Um, and I'm really, again, signage to let, make sure people take their own precautions.
Can you hear him? Spanish.
Larry?
We'll talk about it when I'm done, but you might as well start.
Yes, Kathy, you're on the, we're hearing you.
That's not me. I think that's Aura. Aura, can you mute your phone, please? It is mute. We can hear you. I'm hearing your dog and your conversation.
Larry?
Yes, I, I am really hesitant to go along with it because of the spacing and the wearing the mask. I, I've been out in the public, I take a walk almost every day and people just, uh, spacing and wearing masks. Uh, I would go along with it, but I'd really watch it and see if it works and if it doesn't work, then to go back to not doing the part.
We can hear you.
Hearing your dog and your conversation.
Larry? Yes, I am really hesitant to go along with it because of the spacing and the wearing the mask. I've been out in the public, I take a walk almost every day, and people just, spacing and wearing masks. I would go along with it, but I'd really watch it and see if it works, and if it doesn't work then to go back to not doing the park, but I would go for it right now, but with hesitation.
You know what, I guess I'm kind of along the lines of Mad, but could we incrementally open them up? I mean, I feel like the ball field being a real big area where you could go run and not run into somebody, but the dog park and the skate park, you're just going to be running on top of each other, but that's one concern I have. The other concern I have, and I want to give our police department latitude, so they're not, obviously our parks are still closed at night, I don't want folks sitting at, hence now it's Tent City, and then we have that congregation, we didn't want folks being on top of each other, so whatever we do, and then somebody had talked about signage, and putting some signage in English and Spanish to that effect, that what the hours are, whatever, whatever we open up, so that at least we've made an attempt to educate the public. That's what my thoughts are.
We have Chief Allen here, and I would like him to weigh in, I mean, there are some possibilities of maybe just opening the park across from City Hall, but I'm going to let the police chief kind of speak to what his thought part.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council members. So, I understand all sides of this issue, and I want to compliment community members who have been very, very patient and cooperative. We do not have the resources over in the police department to effectively monitor this, so it would really have to be kind of a self-regulation situation. My fear really is that once we allow, once we go down that path of doing it incrementally, and for whatever reason have to pull it back, it's going to be quite difficult. So, again, I understand all sides of the issue. I think we're almost there in terms of, if you give us a week or two more to see exactly what's going to happen locally and statewide, I think we'll be in a better position to perhaps revisit this issue.
Chief, do you want us to wait for the next meeting, after all this chance to kind of pan out in other communities?
Well, right now, we are still under the same shelter-in-place order, I'm just anticipating that if in early May it is relaxed, whether we can start thinking about that, because right now, we really can't. I don't feel like we have enough authority from the public health official to open up anything. Whether and if she does do this in early May, this is what I'm sort of pounding for. I think for now, we need to stay buttoned up, but on Friday, we're going to receive a new directive regarding face coverings and masks, and they're mandatory, and I know people are going to be involved with that, but I'm really hoping for some loosening of restrictions in early May, and maybe we can open a park or two and see how that goes. But I do agree with the, the skate park is much too many people, I've already seen groups of kids on skateboards being socially distancing, just straight. And the same thing with the dog park, I mean, people touch, you know, I was having playdates with my dog, and I realized people were touching my dog, and they keep touching their own dog, and then, oh my God, that's not okay, and that's bad, so it's hard.
Stephanie, what you're saying is basically, let's give it a little longer, and then you'll have a better idea.
Well, I want to see what the public health officer says, I mean, right now, I don't think she has given us the latitude. Right now, she has only given latitude for if there's a trail, and it's heavily signed, somebody could walk on the trail. And no other city in Mendocino has taken advantage of that leeway, and actually opened their, and publicly opened their parks that is being public. She has just sort of said that as a concept. I think maybe on the coast, they may start to do that. Ucaia is going to continue to be buttoned up, state parks are buttoned up, Army Corps of Engineers parks are totally buttoned up, so we have to wait for the next order, but I think that we should be looking towards what are we going to do with the city, because they are going to give us some flexibility, and it's good for me to know where you are on that.
Looks like you've got some direction then.
Yeah, no, that was good, it's very helpful.
Okay.
The other issue that I wanted to bring up, and I think it's a fairly controversial issue, is we have the ability to test our sewer effluents, and the Water Board has offered to test that for us, and I think that that's, you know, comes with all kinds of things with it. The public, I put that in front of the public health official and asked her how she felt about that, and she highly recommended it. Apparently, the CDC is also recommending it, and the test that is being offered is a test that has been ratified by the CDC, so it's good science, and again, I want to put that in front of view, I think, you know, it's been strongly recommended that all the cities in Mendocino County do test their sewer effluents. And if we do so, it's going to be, it's going to be probably about two weeks till we get results, and we would do a press release in conjunction with our public health officer, and because, you know, whether it's positive or negative, this certainly has some implications. If it's negative, obviously, that's great. If it's positive, you know, that means that there is something in the system, however, since we have no community spread in Willis, you know, we've been doing a good job, even if there's some virus strains out there, we've clearly been doing a good job, but it helps the county and it helps the country sort of gather their statistics together. So, I just, I did want to weigh in with you on that, and how you felt about that.
All right, start with Greta.
I don't have an opinion right now, I'd be interested to hear from the other members.
Suprema?
I have concerns, but no direction to give.
Ed?
I just want to understand that if there were people that had the virus, maybe without any symptoms, and therefore haven't been tested or anything, and they are using our sewage system, and then the virus would be present in the effluent even in tiny, tiny, tiny quantities, is that the situation?
Yes.
And this test is fine-tuned enough that it would be able to pick up a minute amount like that?
Yes, and that's what I actually, both Scott Sherman and I were concerned that this wasn't a good test, but the health officials said that it had been certified by the CDC, and they were using it dramatically back east to gather statistics, and they really wanted to see what California was doing, but I, you know, this is a tough one. And Fort Bragg said that they were going to go ahead and do it.
Yeah, well, I think even if we run the risk of having a very slight, you know, a risk in our effluent there, that we need to know that, and that the CDC and our local health officials, we need the information, so even if it turned out there was some little bit of exposure, or, you know, risk of it looking bad, but it's better to have the information, so I don't object to doing it, and I think we should provide that.
Thank you.
Larry?
I think it's a really good idea to do it, and post whatever the results are for us, I think it's a really good idea.
I agree with Larry, and I think knowledge is power, and anything that we can do to put some data from Willis in our pool helps in the grant keeping things, I'm for it, and like Larry said, it is what it is, and we let our public know, and already folks believe there may be some spread out there throughout this area, I mean, I think the news had it today that two folks that died in Santa Clara died in February, way before the first, what they called the first confirmed death, so they know it's been in California for a lot longer, so I think knowledge is power, so I think let's do it. I think you've got direction.
Thank you, I appreciate that, and actually, Fort Bragg is right now looking at talking points, and the public health official agreed to work with both of our cities if we agreed to do it, and putting out the right messaging to the public regarding it, so thank you very much. I'm nothing else further.
Nothing else further, okay. So, department recommendations, let's start off with the item at hand, is that Andrea, for item A, discussion and possible action on resolution adopting Caltrans Local Assistance Procedures Manual, Chapter 10? Or is that a Dusty, or somebody else?
This is Dusty, I wasn't planning on presenting the item, but I am familiar with the matter in front of the council this evening. This is related to the grant that the city received to fund our Rails with Trails project, and a condition of receiving those funds is that we recognize these Caltrans standards as rules that govern how we move forward with the grant funding. We are very careful to ensure that the resolution was written, so that it wouldn't accidentally apply to a project that it didn't need to, and again, it's simply being part of the council to keep Caltrans active as we move forward with the Rails with Trails project.
Okay, so this wasn't affect like our roads or something else, it would just be strictly to the trail?
Yes, that is the intent.
All right, Greta, do you have any questions, or Dusty?
I do not.
Suprema?
No.
Ed?
No questions.
Larry?
I think it's a good idea, and anything to keep the Rails with Trails going, I think is excellent, and going to be an asset to the City of Willis.
All right, anybody from the public like to chime in and ask a question? All right, I'll bring it back up to us, and at this point, a motion. Do you have something you'd like to make? Or to make the motion, do I have a second?
Well, seconded out, that's Mad.
All right, motion, and seconded for the discussion. If not, I'll call for the vote.
Ms. Number Connie?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Strong?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Merrick Gonzalez?
Yes.
All right, at this point, does our Chief of Police have anything?
No, sir, I do not.
Does our city attorney have anything?
No, Mayor, I do not.
A city clerk?
Not this evening, thank you.
All right, and human resources?
Not tonight, thank you.
All right. Amy, do you have anything? Okay, do we have anybody from Watershore or anything in the audience?
They are not here tonight.
Okay, so at this point, I think I've hit everybody. I guess at this point, we're on item A, please tell the committee, boards, and agency reports. So, I'll start off with Greta.
I have attended no committee meetings since the last council meeting.
Suprema?
I've not attended any meetings, other than just keeping up on many things that are going on in our community, but no formalized meetings.
All right, Mad?
We had a meeting of Emma Swa, the Solid Waste Management Authority, and approved a budget where we can buy a new vehicle next year, our next fiscal year, and raised our new general manager's salary effective July 1st to reflect her new duties, and she reported that we have limited service right now for hazardous waste collection, because they can't send people out and vehicles with two people in them, which is what they usually do, so the only collections are happening in Ucaia, I think, once a week. If anyone wants to find out about that, they could go to the Mendocino Recycle Facebook page or website. We're hoping to resume a little bit more service in another month or so. That's all, thank you.
Larry, and I apologize, Larry, I did not attend the Measure B meeting today, I meant to zoom in, but I have another meeting, so.
I did not attend it either, so I have nothing.
All right, and at this point, I have not done a legal city either, so I'm not sure any other thing I have, and Lafferty won't meet till May, so. All right, city council member reports and recommendations. I'll start off with Greta.
Thank you, this is Greta, I just wanted to say, I hope Chief Allen is still on the line, I'm getting many comments from members of the community that they really like the tone of the police department right now, people just feeling really good about the department in general, so I really credit you for bringing a positive breath of fresh air, and I hope that you're aware that the community appreciates you.
Thank you so much for that comment, ma'am, and I will relay it to the very hard-working men and women of the Willis Police Department.
All right, if you don't have anything else, Suprema?
No, Connor?
Mad, do you have anything else?
No, no doubt.
Larry?
I agree with Greta, I heard some real positives about the police department, and I want to relay it in my voice also, it's real nice to hear it from the people in the community, thank you.
All right, and I just want to say, I really appreciate everybody in the city doing their part, and I know it's a lot of uncertainty, but we will get over this, and it sounds like things may open up slowly, and maybe that's the way we have to take this, slow and easy, so I appreciate everybody, from council members to Stephanie and company, and everybody at City Hall, and all the utility workers, et cetera, I mean, I see them out doing their thing, I see the street sweeper out doing his thing, and so, assuming it's Darren, but maybe I'm wrong there, so I just wanted to add that in there. So, good and welfare.
Hi, this is Greta again, I have a good and welfare. A couple of weeks ago, some friends and I all pooled our money together, we each put in $75, and we raised $900, with which we purchased three $300 gift certificates. We got one from Mariposa Market, one from J.D. Redhouse, and one from Spare Time Garden Supplies. We then offered those up to the community as grand prizes for anybody who supports our local businesses during this shutdown by purchasing a minimum of a $20 gift certificate. Every $20 gift certificate purchased gives the purchaser an entry into the drawing to win one of those big $300 gift certificate grand prizes. Our hope is that people will buy gift certificates, especially to those of our businesses who are closed and are seeing either no or greatly reduced revenue, getting a little bit of cash flow to them right now is so helpful, and it gives the purchaser a gift certificate that they can spend later when the shelter-in-place order is lifted, also gives them a chance to win a huge fabulous prize. We've been advertising it on social media, I was asked to speak on KCYX to promote the program, it's been in Willis News and Willis Weekly, and we just really are trying to generate support for our tiny businesses who are really suffering right now. So, if anybody's listening, would like to support their favorite place, call them up, figure out how you can give them 20 bucks, or you can give them more, buy a gift certificate, and do your part to help our small businesses that really need you. Thank you so much.
This is Suprema. Um, I just wanted to say that despite the, the struggle that we're feeling as business owners, um, myself and others I know recognize the importance of paying our sales tax and, uh, have issued my sales tax payment and I know many others have. And so, uh, I just wanted to put it out there that, uh, from a city perspective, we appreciate those who submitted their sales tax on time. And then, uh, my, my second comment was that, uh, um, if we could get a follow-up from Merrick Gonzalez, um, we had a close session item that we haven't met to discuss and, uh, it would be nice if we just get an update. And the update can be at the next meeting, or an update.
Yeah, no, in fact, I believe, uh, and maybe Karen could facilitate things by just sending out an email, uh, that it's moving forward. That's all I want to say at this point. And, uh, if somebody has anything else?
I, I just, this is Mitch. I just wanted to mention that today is the 50th anniversary of the first birthday and there are activities going on all over the place, all virtually, not with any things that had been planned before that included gatherings are not obviously happening. But, um, it is an important, um, commemoration of a somewhat of a, a change in attitude that happened fifty years ago and that we need to get back to again. And one of the little silver linings of this shelter-in-place is that the skies have really cleared that in urban areas and we always have clear skies here, but, uh, today the amount of carbon going into the atmosphere has been reduced dramatically. So when we have the restrictions lifted, let's try to continue, um, doing what we can to make our earth healthier and, uh, a good place for our children and grandchildren to, to thrive. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mitch. Um, yeah, I, uh, just been watching all that shows, with the show The Animals Taking Over where folks aren't, uh, laying around, so. Um, there was, I guess that's all I have and I think at this point there's no close session, so I think we can move to adjournment. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.